...meeting October 10th, 2017. It's now 9:31. Erica, could we please have the roll call?
Commissioner Henry.
Here.
Commissioner Tedesco.
Here.
Commissioner Odoricio.
Here.
Commissioner Hanson.
Here.
Commissioner Hodge.
Here.
All right. If everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so we're having a little technical difficulties in regards to our awards today. It's kind of like goes along with our luncheons, apparently. So we're going to go ahead and do a motion to approve the agenda, uh, the genta, agenda. And we're going to go ahead and move awards and presentations past the consent calendar and hopefully the difficulties will be gone by the time we're done with the consent calendar. So can I have a motion to approve the agenda with that change?
Slow moved.
Second.
Commissioner Hodge.
Go slow.
Commissioner Odoricio.
Hi.
Commissioner Hanson. Commissioner Tedesco.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. All right. Next is public comment. Erica, do we have anyone signed up from the public that wishes to speak? Say it slow.
We do not.
Okay. Next is elected officials communications. Oh, Commissioner Tedesco, you're my lifesaver. Make it slow.
Make it slow. So for those of you, you know, we've had a really rough weekend. You know, we've had a lot of things happen over the weekend and, or last weekend. And, uh, you know, we had some great things happen in Adams County. So there's two things that I want to do. First is I was actually in Las Vegas over the weekend when they had the shooting. And, you know, it was very chaotic. I was there from Friday until about Tuesday. I was not at the event. I was actually sleeping at that time. But, um, you know, just talking to the people out there and the way that Las Vegas came together to react to something as horrible and tragic as that, um, you know, I was talking to Uber drivers that, you know, they were turning off their, their meters and they were going off the clock, but they were out there that night and they were driving people where they needed to go. One Uber driver told me, he said he took a couple home and it was a 40-minute drive for him just to get the couple home. So that's the kind of strength and togetherness that we had in Las Vegas when, when this happened. It was, you know, talking to those people when, even though you weren't at the event, no one knew exactly what was happening in Las Vegas. So they were locking down the different hotels. There were people that were out of their room and locked out on the street until like three or four o'clock in the morning. Um, it affected the entire city. And, you know, they just came together. There wasn't one sign when I left on Tuesday that didn't say Vegas Proud and Vegas Strong. And, you know, I just wanted to take the time today to kind of point out what type of strength that took for that entire city to come together. And I feel like Adams County is the same way. I think that we would come together in a tragedy like that also. And to show our respect, I would ask that we just show a moment of silence today for those people in Las Vegas if we could. Come together. And I feel like Adams County is the same way. I think that we would come together in a tragedy like that also. And to show our respect, I would ask that we just show a moment of silence today for those people in Las Vegas if we could. Thank you. The, the second part, if I may, Madam Chair, the second part is, is on a happier note. Um, this last week, we were able to dedicate the new Pete Manlis Human Service Center. And, you know, although we have a brand-new human service center and a brand-new building and, and we're doing all these things, we're going to run into issues we didn't think about. And I want everybody to work together to make this thing successful. And I think we can do that. This is a beautiful building with incredible employees. And as I've said before, we, we are, we have world-class employees delivering world-class services in a world-class facility now. And I want to just thank everyone, all the people that had, had a hand in this and everything that they've done to make this happen. And we need, we still have work to do. There's still issues, but we'll get them resolved if we work together. So thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else for comments? Okay. I see none. Can I have a motion to approve the consent calendar, please?
Madam Chair, move that we approve the consent calendar.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Odoricio.
Hi.
Commissioner Tedesco.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanson. Commissioner Hodge.
Hi.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. All right. A little technical problem was we didn't have our script for today's, you know, awards and presentations, which is Employee of the Season. So here we go. Today, we are pleased to announce the summer winners of the county's employee recognition programs known as the Employees and Team of the Season Awards. The employees honored here today have demonstrated exceptional service to the county and its residents. It is our pleasure to recognize them for their exemplary efforts. We will first announce the Team of the Season winner, followed by the Employee of the Season category winners, and finish with introducing the overall Employee of the Season winner. We would like the team and, we would like the team and individual winners to come to the podium when we announce your name. We will also invite your department director or supervisor to join you at the podium for brief remarks. If you choose, after we have read your nomination, after all remarks have been made, please have a seat here in the front. Okay. Have a seat here in the front. In the interest of time, we will present awards at the end of the ceremony, followed by a group photos. Commissioner Hanson.
The first award today is the Team of the Season. Um, and we would like to have the Public Works Traffic Operations Team come down. And Jeff Maxwell, Public Works Director, and they're already down.
We're close.
They're already up front. I like that.
It's almost like you knew.
Yeah.
The Team of the Season Award was launched in 2017, and it recognizes project teams, work groups, and are cross-functional work groups who have successfully collaborated outside of their normal ru- work routine, um, duties to accomplish a significant goal that positively impacted a workplace in Adams County. Um, the award is derived from our Adams County value of teamwork, working together on behalf of the Adams County community. Team members Jason Solis, Gabriel Vargas, David Schmidtline Jr., Felix Lorenzo, Taylor Bonds, Michelle Bobst, was it Bobst?
Bob.
I got it right the first time. And Ian Cortez, who were nominated by Scott Wells, and he writes, he wrote a lot. Um, so be prepared. Uh, we all have been stuck in traffic from time to time, and then we want to know who the traffic guys are and, and girls too. What we don't think about is all the times that we get to where we are going without any problems. Uh, the Adams County Traffic Operations Team works day in and day out to keep the smooth flow of traffic going. This is a troop of, group of dedicated people who support one another in the office, in the field, and even their days off. They have ta- taken upon themselves to own the traffic department. Uh, whether it is ma- day-to-day maintenance, special projects, or learning new parts of their jobs, in a very short period of time, they have moved the department years ahead. They have gone from just being sign guys and gals to being leaders in the traffic community. Uh, Adams County was the first in the state of Colorado to implement RTC School Zone Safety System by installing state-of-the-art smart school flashers. And within a year, they are now the people other agencies call for technical support. With support from right-of-way enforcement and their administrative assistant, they have made the department something that they and all can be proud of. Without complaint and 24/7, this crew will do whatever it takes to keep the safe flow of traffic moving. By taking pride in themselves and the department, they work every day to make better, uh, to better, every day to better themselves in Adams County. They are all-inclusive and are a great team and operate like a family. By coming together, they have done and will continue to do great things. Jeff and everyone else, would you like to say a few words?
I think Scott said it all. But, um, no, I would like to say a few words. They, they really do work and function more like a family than a team of coworkers. Um, four of these guys, Dave Schmidtline, Gabe Vargas, Scott Wells, Jason Solis, they've been together for many, many years. I won't say how many, but many, many years. Um, their team was joined by Felix Lorenzo and Taylor Bonds earlier this summer, and they brought a fresh new perspective to the team, fit right in, uh, started getting things done right away. Of course, they're supported by Michelle Bobst and Ian Cortez with right-of-way and administrative support. All of these people work together as a very cohesive team, and it's a tough job. Not only do they maintain all of the sign and marking on 3,000 miles of roads throughout the county to perfection, they also have to maintain all of the traffic signals. And that's difficult because, I can say this now, those signals were built 50 years ago. So, um, just imagine how upset we get when our iPhone is two years out of date or three years out of date. They're working with technologies from the 1970s. And they keep them functioning day in and day out, 24 hours a day, never failing. It's a critical job and they do an excellent job at that. The good news is, we got together as a team this summer. We strategized together. We wrote a grant to Dr. Cog, Denver Regional Council of Governments, and we received a 100% funding award to replace almost all the signals in the county with new technology and new equipment. So their jobs are going to get a lot more fun for them in the next few months. Very exciting times. Um, all of that is due to how this team works together as a family. They're incredible. Uh, I couldn't be more proud of them, and I congratulate them on getting this award. And I'm going to ask Scott to come up and say just a few words, too, please.
My turn. So I just want to say, thanks, guys. You know, we should all be proud of these guys. They've done a lot for us and for the county. So keep this sort of sweet. Michelle, Ian, Michelle, both of you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
With, you know, on your end, you're not in the field, but with the help you've given us. I just, we wouldn't have made it sometimes without these two. So it took everybody standing here, even, even Jeff, to do it. So.
And Brian, we want to welcome you to the team. He's our newest member, but, um, I think traffic's kind of settled here. So we'll be good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any, anybody else want to say anything? Okay. If you could sit up front like you have been, that's awesome. Commissioner Tedesco.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So our next Employee of the Season winner is for the Bright Idea Creativity Award. Would Laura Cheminey please come to the podium? I feel like I'm on crisis rate. Could we have Chris Klein, Director of Human Services, come up also? The Bright Idea Creativity category recognizes an individual who develops innovative solutions to business challenges, breaks down boundaries, creates new relationships to improve how work gets done, and approaches problems as an opportunity for growth. Laura was nominated by Allison Walter, who writes, "At the present time, nearly half of Adams County children placed in out-of-home care are placed in the care of a family member. We are required to run a number of thorough background checks on the providers to ensure they are safe caregivers for children. One check we conduct is with the DMV to ensure that caregivers are licensed drivers so that they can safely transport children. Over the past couple of years, due to system challenges at DMV, it could take up to a month to receive the results from the background checks. This delay kept us from getting the timely results we needed. In the past several months, Laura has taken the initiative to explore how we might be able to obtain faster results." Quest. "This will have substantial impact on our program, allowing us to complete thorough background checks as quickly as possible to ensure safety for children. We are appreciative of her idea, her ongoing willingness to look at how we can improve, and her commitment to partnering with other community agencies." Wow. I did not know that it would be a month to verify for taking care of these kids. That is absolutely insane.
Not anymore.
Thank you. Well-deserving for this award. Thank you. Chris, would you like to say something?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. It certainly requires a certain level of commitment to go beyond what your daily tasks are. But it also requires a certain level of courage to identify new ways to approaching the way we handle our business and then proposing those bright ideas. Fortunately for us, Laura had not only the commitment, but the courage. Because not only now are we conducting things more effectively and efficiently, but we're going to achieve far better outcomes for kids and families. And that's what's the most important. So Laura, thank you again. Congratulations. We look forward to your song.
Laura, would you like to say something?
No, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Commissioner Odoricio.
Our next award is for the Collaboration and Helping and Mentoring Award. Would Yvonne Castillo, Jody Camerzo, Business and Weowa Programs Manager, please come to the podium? The Collaboration, Helping, and Mentoring Award honors individuals who play an important role by positively influencing others, by working towards strategic plan goals, participating in change initiatives, and investing in coaching, mentoring, and being a role model for others. Yvonne was nominated by the team of Carol Aguaniga, Ryan Clark, Charlie Ellis, Jeanette Gonzalez, Greg McBoat, Aldo Parra, and Brett Shager, who write, "Yvonne is a champion of the Workforce Business Center, having altered the culture and attitude of the department. Serving as a founding member of the M&amp;M Committee, as well as chairing it for over five years, Yvonne goes above and beyond to create a positive environment. She has spent countless hours off the clock working to make everyone's work experience brighter. She continuously spearheads fun and interactive activities that not only bring smiles to people's faces, but also help keep focus on the county's core mission and values. A great example is, was one day after work, she was walking by another department where a customer was waiting with no one to help that person. She asked after the cus- she asked after the customer and determined he was waiting for an appointment and the front desk staff had already left. Yvonne went into the office and searched to find a person who could help the customer. She is the go-to person for the daily operations and events of the Workforce and Business Center. She does all of this while managing a stringent client load. She is not only the stalwart for any meeting or event, but she is the first person to go in times of stress and difficulty, always lending an ear and a helpful thought. She was instrumental in the move to the current location and helps the operations of the Workforce Investment Board."
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Jody Camerzo, and I'd like to recognize Yvonne for all of the hard work that she does. Our Motivation and Morale Committee really keeps the fun going in our office and at the most stressful times finds a way to bring some levity into the office. Yvonne has been an integral part of that. Um, she is upbeat, positive. She comes up with some great ideas. And even more than that, she encourages others to find their creativity and supports that. She is well-deserving of this award.
Good morning, Commissioners. Um, I would just like to express my appreciation to my M&amp;M coworkers. Um, it is really an honor to be recognized by, by my peers. And I appreciate each and every one of them. It is also a privilege to work with the whole WBC staff. We're, it's an amazing team. And I'd like to thank the management for their continued support for what the M&amp;M team does to encourage all of our team members. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Hodge.
Next, we present the award for the Extra Effort category. The Extra Effort Award celebrates the employees, employee whose unique level of service fosters good business relationships and enhances the county's positive reputation. Would Samantha Parkin and Teri Laut, Human Resources Director, please come forward? Samantha was nominated by Matt Rivera for this award, who writes, "I am relatively new to the organization, and when people reflect upon the most anxious and stress-filled moments of their lives, they often refer to their first few months at a new job. I started my first day and was nervous about the entire onboarding process. Fortunately, I was greeted by the epitome of friendliness and professionalism, Samantha Parkin. Her demeanor and follow-through made me feel welcome and important. She displayed an energy and enthusiasm about her that was pleasantly surprising and heartening. She offered help at every turn and was proactive to assist when she thought I might be struggling with the acclamation. She took a genuine interest, personally showing me how to operate basic systems and introducing me to internal platforms. She shared information regarding the Adams County Fair, assisted me in logistics to get passes for my fair. Her actions were comforting and her patience and kindness endless. She made my experience truly memorable and positively influenced by early impressions of the organization. More importantly, I found to realize that my experience was exclusive." Sam is a true relationship champion, always approaching people in situations with a smile and positivity. She handles all interactions, both internally and externally, with respect and compassion. She is a model public employee and a real bright spot for Adams County. Teri and Samantha, would you like to say a few words?
I would love to say a few words about Samantha. I thought Matt did a very good job putting together the nomination. Uh, he explained the great qualities Samantha has every day, and Matt's not the only one who says that about her. So, um, as I thought about what great qualities Samantha has, um, I think one would be energetic. So maybe you walk in the office at eight o'clock in the morning, and sometimes on a Monday morning at eight o'clock, it's a little bit difficult to be happy and smiling. And you're, you know, you got a long week ahead of you, and Samantha cheers up. She's got a smile on her face. She's bright and cheery and ready to go for the week. And it's, really sets the tone for the office and, and for any employee coming in. So I really appreciate that about her. She's also very supportive. Um, she teaches. She shares information. She assists where needed and directs employees and coworkers to appropriate resources. She's also very caring, and I think that's what helps her do well with her job. She listens, she smiles, and she truly cares about people every day. I thought Matt did a great job explaining her as a relationship champion, and we're proud to have her as a member of our team, both within HR and at the, uh, the larger Adams County team. Thanks, Sam.
Well, thank you all very much. I'm very, very grateful. Um, I take great pride in being a useful resources for not only our employees, but thereby the citizens that they serve. Um, I would be remiss if I didn't mention that it's the extra effort, the hard work and the diligence that I see so many of our employees put forth every day that inspires me to do better. So thank you. I really appreciate it.
All right. Eight AM every morning is tough for me to smile. Just saying. Not a morning person. Our next category is for Making It Happen. Would Pat- Patrick Ness and District Attorney Dave Young please come forward? Patrick was nominated by Kristen West. Pa- Patrick has a way with people over his nearly 30 years in law enforcement. He has developed the ability to establish a rapport with just about every, anyone. That experience, along with an incredible passion for what he does, make, make him an asset to our office. Patrick is assigned to Division E, so I know that every case he works on gets the same attention and effort. One outstanding example of Patrick's work is an attempt, attempted murder case in which the victim wasn't, was unable to testify. Patrick conducted a statement analysis of our 17-year-old eyewitness report to police and identified areas in which, in which she had not disclosed everything. He went to great lengths to arrange for the witness to be re-interviewed where she lived in Arkansas. When the witness unexpectedly moved back to Colorado, Patrick immediately drove four hours to Craig. He got to know the witness and her mother and kept in touch through a couple of continuances. Because of the additional information Patrick learned in the rapport he established, her testimony went incredibly well, and the defendant was held accountable for his actions. Ah, District Attorney Dave Young, do you want to say a few words?
Sure. Good morning. Thanks for having us here this morning. I'll be brief, because I know Patrick has a long-prepared speech that he wants to give to you. Is it right there? Patrick Ness is, uh, one of our investigators in our office, and really goes above and beyond, much like all our investigators do in our office. Uh, they're no longer just process servers where they serve people with subpoenas. Uh, they actually read files. They look at the investigations in ways on how they can improve the investigations. And Patrick came with us with quite a bit of experience. Um, he was the cold case investigator for the state of New Mexico when we hired him. He retired from that position. And so now we have a part-time cold case investigator, and we've actually started looking at cold cases in this jurisdiction. In fact, next week, I don't know if you know this, we have, the sheriff's office is presenting a homicide case to us from 1993. Uh, and so Patrick's going to be digging into that, as well as some other cases that he's looked at, and hope that we can get some resolution for the victim's family in that particular case and other, other cases. So we're very fortunate to have Patrick. He certainly goes above and beyond. Uh, not many people would take that four-hour drive to get to know the victim in that case and the witnesses in that case, uh, to make sure that we can achieve justice in that case. And I think we did that, thanks to Patrick's help in that case. Uh, so we're very lucky to have him. And without further ado, congratulations, Patrick. And try to keep your speech down a little bit this time, will you please? So good morning, Commissioners. Um, I am one of those transplants from New Mexico that clog up all your, your lights and all that. I apologize. I apologize on behalf of all New Mexicans for that. But, uh, um, coming from, uh, a unit that, in Albuquerque that was, had a solid rate for homicides above the national average, um, I would put our team against any team in the nation. Um, so I'm fortunate to work for the Adams County District Attorney's Office. I'm grateful for Dave Young to give me a chance to, uh, for someone that wasn't from the area, that he didn't know, to give me a chance to, uh, come and help where I could with the DA's office. Uh, I want to thank Mark Swisher, my supervisor, for just, you know, basically opening it up and saying, "Go do what you need to do." Um, you know, I just went and said, "I need to drive to Craig." He says, "Okay." Um, and I really didn't know how far Craig was, but I learned, you know, I, so, uh, they said just west of Denver. I'm like, "Okay." But, uh, so, um, you know, coming from, uh, another state, every, everything that, that basically that I've had to go through as far as employment-wise for the, the county of Adams County, uh, it's been a surprise. It's been from, uh, HR with Tina to my coworkers. It's just been a joy to, uh, to work here. And, um, people ask me, "Would you ever go back?" And I'm like, "I'd go back for some of the green chili meals in Albuquerque, but I'd never go back to live there." So I appreciate it, and I, uh, thank you for this award, and I'm grateful. Thank you.
Commissioner Hanson.
The next is the Unsung Hero category. Amon Chabra and Jim Sidleke, please come forward. This, uh... This, this category honors individuals who perform high-quality, reliable, and critical work that, if not completed, would compromise operations. This person functions behind the scenes, is willing to improve work conditions, situations, and does so without fanfare or being promoted, or prompted. Jeez. Sorry, there's something we didn't tell you. You're not getting a promotion.
We were going to get to that later, but...
Okay. Nobody's going to want this award ever. Cassandra Bossingham nominated Amon and writes, "Amon is the man completely behind the scenes, but all of his work is the face of Adams County. The quality of his work is unlike anything I have seen in my previous counties. He has produced countless commercials, promo videos, and recap videos for the Adams County Fair, and I'm always amazed at how incredible his work is. I was also impressed by the Bring Your Child the Workday video that he produced." Would you like to come up here and read the script?
Yeah. It sounds like home for Amon right now, so it's just fine.
Very similar.
The kids loved it. I know that everyone in the county appreciates Amon's work, but I feel like he doesn't get near the recognition he deserves for the type of work he produces. Without Amon's amazing skills, we would just look, we would look just like any other county fair, and I appreciate the fact that he has made us stand out as one of the best. Would you all like to make some comments?
Commissioners, I'm going to let Amon take most of this, because he, like myself, is a former TV guy, and we could go for hours. But I want to thank Cassandra, first of all, for the nomination, because it is important work that Amon does late into the night, like so many of the support staff surrounding the fair. So, it's great that he was recognized for that. When Amon arrived with the county, he came with a television news background. He definitely has some of those skills right now that he's using, but he has expanded his skill set to include animation, he produces commercials, a lot of things that he didn't do in his previous job. We have sent him to trainings, he has come back and integrated everything he learned. This is a full all-star that we have in our video department, and he's telling the stories of the county. And I'm really impressed with what he has done, obviously the quality of his work. But I want to speak for a moment about the quality of character that Amon brings to the job as well. We just joked that it sounded like home. Amon is a father of four who does a phenomenal job coaching kit. What's that?
Just three.
Just three. Oh, excuse me. Hey, Amber, if you're watching. Just three now. Who knows? Amon has taken on not only so much here, but he's also up at 5:00 AM helping with his church every day. And he is just a valuable member of the community, a great leader in the sports for the kids that he coaches, and obviously in our department. So, he's definitely worthy of this, and I'm so glad that Cassandra nominated him. Thank you, Cassandra.
Like Jim said, yeah, we can ramble on for a while. That's what we were trained to do, coming out of college. But I will just say again, thank you to Cassandra and everybody there at the fair for nominating me, not just Cassandra's staff, but the entire Park staff has been awesome to work with. And it's, I come from a background, and Jim will tell you this in TV, where you kind of put your head down, and you work, and you work, and you work, and you get very little recognition. It's just kind of expected. And so, to actually get some recognition was sort of a pleasant surprise. It's not something you expect or really necessarily always work for, but it's something that's definitely appreciated. So, I appreciate it, and Cassandra and the Park staff. It's always a pleasure to work with them, and like Jim said, any one of those folks that worked behind the scenes at the fair could have gotten this unsung hero award. So, I'm grateful for that, and I'm grateful for Jim and Krista and all the wonderful people I work with in my department. You know, like we said, we don't talk about recognition too often, but very often, not only them, but a lot of people in this room have given me very kind words on the work that I do, and so it's really nice to be appreciated. So, thank you for the opportunity, and thanks for the nomination and for the award. I really appreciate it.
Commissioner Tedesco.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So now, we celebrate our last and final winner, not last, but final winner, in the success in practice category. Would Ryan Modica and Nathan Mosley, Director of Parks and Open Space, please come forward? The success in practice award honors individuals who play an important role in successful interventions, problem resolutions, or customer improvements. I want to know what the interventions are. They like them on TV? No?
It was similar.
Sometimes.
Only during the fair, Commissioner Tedesco.
I've been there. Ryan was nominated by Cassandra Bossingham, boy, you're busy, who writes, "Ryan worked his first Adams County Fair this year and had one of the more difficult jobs, vendor coordination. It sounds easy, but when you get a bunch of retailers attempting to sell more of their product than the person next to them, tempers can fly. Ryan did a great job of keeping his vendors happy and making sure any conflicts were addressed quickly. This might be the first coordinator I have worked with that didn't cry during the fair because of a mean vendor." You don't know that. He had to go home. Ryan would politely listen to their concerns and do his best to accommodate their requests. He learned quickly that sometimes they just want to be heard, and even if their request is impossible, if you should, if you show you truly tried, they respect you for that. He was also able to jump in and help the beverage services and change, with change, and was also around when any of his other employees needed help. I know next year, he will have a better idea of what to expect from the vendors and might coast through the fair. Yeah, good luck with that. Just in case you wanted to know. I'm just kidding. Could, could we get some remarks, Nathan?
Sure. Good morning, Commissioners. I have to say Cassandra put in two other nominations this round as well, and I want to thank Amon and the team in the PIO's office for their kind words as well. And you see a lot of our staff sitting back there, and it truly is a team effort, and there's a lot of people that we can recognize. But I do appreciate that Cassandra went above and beyond and recognized some people, and not all of them won, but they all did a fantastic job, and we couldn't do it without everybody's teamwork to make that happen. But Ryan came in, he's been here for just over a year, and, you know, he does the day-to-day rentals out at the regional park, but then he was also given the task of dealing with the vendors during the fair. And like the nomination said, they're competing, they want the customers, you know, they feel like it's up to him to make sure people are coming past their booth, and if they're not, then it's Ryan's fault. And so, just working with them, keeping them calm, because the week, although it's only five days, there's a lot of hours put in during that week, and I have seen crying. I've been close to it myself a few times. Luckily, I have an office that I can go to and close the door and do a little screaming. But at the end of the week, you know, you look back, and it was, it was well worth it. So, I want to thank Ryan for all of his hard work, and he's certainly deserving of this. We're lucky to have him on our team.
Good morning, Commissioners. Cassandra Bossingham, Fair and Special Events Manager. Just to say a few things, excuse the grammar and stuff on my nominations. It was fair, the week after fair, so my brain was pretty fried. But I think that Ryan brings a good balance to our team, and that's why there was no crying. It wasn't just Ryan, but we didn't have any tears on our team, and I think that was great to see from other fairs that I've worked. There's always been one, and it's frustrating. You're dealing with thousands of people and thousands of personalities, and everybody wants what they want. They don't care about the person next to them. So, to have Ryan's calm demeanor on our team really helped us all out, and for him to take on one of the more stressful jobs with the vendors. And we had a moment of intervention, and I got called by the sheriffs to intervene with one of his vendors who was completely calm and normal, and I'm like, "Why did I get called for this?" But they didn't call Ryan, otherwise he would have taken care of it. But I think he did a great job, and he's learned a lot, and I think next year's going to be great, because we've got new ideas, and he's going to look outside of the normal box of, "Here's the vendors, just do what you're supposed to do." And I think he learned real quick what to get creative and to help people out. So, thank you for not just this award, but for the Employee of the Season, too. I think he's very well deserving of it.
Thank you, Commissioners. Just real quick, just to reiterate what Nathan said, this was a team effort. It's really nice to get recognized, but also I want to recognize the team I work with, Cassandra, Courtney, Melanie, everybody at Parks, you know, it was a lot of, I would say, fun, but a lot of work, and I just really appreciate being recognized, but I want to, share with them.
Commissioner Oderusio.
All right. Thanks, Ryan. Now, we're going to take a moment to personally present each winner with their awards. As we do that, we'll take photos of the winners and the winning team. But before we do that, we wish to thank all of the employees who are joining us today for supporting their peers. We also want to remind everyone that nominations are currently being accepted for the Fall Employee of the Season and Team of the Season awards. So, please visit My Adams or contact Human Resources for more information on how you can nominate deserving coworkers and teams within your department or within the county. So now, let's present the awards and take the photos down front. We would also like to take photos of the winning team and individual winners afterwards. So, please meet with our photographer in the lobby immediately following this presentation down front.
Okay. We'll go ahead and continue today's meeting. County manager has to get back to his seat. County manager, what business do you have for us today?
Yes, Commissioners, good morning. The first item and the only item before you is a presentation by our Budget Manager, Nancy Duncan, and that's the 2018 Adams County Proposed Budget.
Whoa. Visuals. I like visuals.
I know. I know. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Nancy Duncan, the Budget Manager for Adams County, and I'm here to present the 2018 Proposed Budget as recommended by the County Manager. This is required by state statutes so that citizens have the opportunity for input. A notice was put in that, a notice of this public hearing was published in the North Glen Thornton Sentinel on Thursday, October the 5th. No action needs to be taken today. This is informational only. The total, this slide represents the total revenue amount for the 2018 Proposed Budget, which is $464,265,748. Property tax revenue is expected to increase 18.9% due to 2017 being a reevaluation year and also a boost in new construction. Sales tax is also expected to increase 4.5%. Licenses and permits are increasing 21.3%, mainly due to building permits. The overall increase for revenues from the 2017 adopted budget to the 2018 proposed budget is 9.2%. General fund revenue is expected to be $193,867,780. The main revenue source in the general fund is property taxes. All expenditures for all funds are budgeted at $485,273,179. This is an increase of 7.5% over the 2017 adopted budget. Included in this amount is the pay plan proposed by the Executive Leadership Team and Human Resources. A study session will be held later this afternoon to give you more information regarding the pay plan. This year, we were very lucky in that we were able to reduce our health benefit cost. We also have several capital needs which are included. This includes the new Riverdale Animal Shelter, several public works projects, and the design of a multipurpose arena at the regional park. Of the total amount, $431,982,395 are for day-to-day operations of Adams County. The total of all the expenditures for the general fund are $197,719,525. Of that amount, $192,508,639 are for daily operations. It's important to note the expected revenues are more than the operating expenditures of Adams County. This shows that we are not using any fund balance for daily operations. This slide shows operating revenues, CIP, and one-time projects, and the use of fund balance for all funds and also the general fund. For all funds, the use of fund balance is $21,7431. For all funds, there are $53,290,784 in capital improvement projects and also one-time maintenance projects. In the general fund, there are $12,955,799 in capital improvement projects and one-time maintenance projects. And there's a proposed use of general fund fund balance of $11,596,638. The use of fund balance is for capital improvement plans and also one-time projects and follows the use of fund balance policy established by the Board of County Commissioners. The next steps in the budget process are, October the 10th, which is today, we presented the proposed budget in public hearing. The next step, the next step after that is the Elected Officials 2018 Proposed Budget and Study Session next Tuesday, the 17th. The Executive Leadership Team and the Budget Team will be meeting with you during November as needed to discuss this capital and business case project needs. And on December 5th, we will have the first reading of the 2018 County Proposed Budget. And on December the 12th, we will have the second reading and adoption of the 2018 Adams County Budget, along with the certification of mill levies. Do you have any questions or comments?
Commissioners, any questions? Like the slides. Thank you.
The Adams County Proposed Budget will be online at the end of business today at adco.gov.org for Adams County residents to review. And I just want to thank you for your time today. I appreciate the time that everyone has put in during the budget process, especially you, the Executive Leadership Team, the Department Directors, and my own staff. This has been a very collaborative process this year, and I appreciate everyone's help very much.
Thank you. Any questions, Commissioners? Nope. All righty. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No other business.
All right. County Attorney, what do you have for us?
Good afternoon, or good morning, Commissioners. We have before you this morning the second reading- We have before you this morning the second reading and potential adoption of Ordinance Number 11 Concerning Illicit Discharges to the Public Storm Drainage System or Waters of the State of Colorado Within Unincorporated Adams County. This ordinance was read for the first time on September 12th and then published in the Denver Post on September 17th. So it is back before you for a second reading and potential adoption. We did not receive any public comments on the proposed ordinance, and we can ask if there's anyone here today who would like to address it. And certainly we can answer questions for the board. I did describe it briefly on the September 12th hearing, that it's primarily to bring our stormwater ordinance into compliance with regulations and to iron out some inconsistencies.
All right. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to come forward? Considering I see only staff, I'm assuming there isn't anybody. Is there any questions from the board in regards to this? All right. Do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move we adopt Ordinance Number 11 Concerning Illicit Discharges to the Public Storm Drainage System or Waters of the State of Colorado Within Unincorporated